بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم Can you hear me? Our team, can you hear me please?
You're audible brother.
Okay. بسم الله الرحمن الرحيم الحمد لله رب العالمين وصداو السلام على سيدنا محمد وعلى آله وصحه جمعين. Ladies and gentlemen distinguished participants dear colleagues السلام عليكم ورحمة الله وبركاته. It gives us tremendous pleasure today to welcome you to this public hearing session. On a newly issued exposure draft of AIOF Financial Accounting Standard on Transfer of Assets Between Investment Pools. This event is held in collaboration with two major partners in Bangladesh. The Central Sharia Board for Islamic Banks Bangladesh CSBIB. And Bangladeshi AIOF Fellows Forum BAFF. Being amongst our key supporters and partners in Bangladesh. We would like to thank them for having taken or taking the efforts and extending the support in organizing today's public hearing. We also hope that through jurisdictional connections with eastern countries where Islamic finance has already witnessed impressive growth in recent years and is poised to gain more traction in the future. AIOF would have, we are certain, we are confident, I would have a better stronghold in Bangladesh on many fronts. Including standards adoption, implementation and capacity building. Now and in the future, Insha Allah with the good offices of all our partners. The public hearing as a process, as many of you are aware. Is one of the fourteen mandatory steps in standards development at AIOF. And represent an opportunity for us to interact with and benefit from the knowledge, experience and wisdom of professional individuals and experts from all corners of the industry and globally. On the newly issued exposure drafts. As exposure drafts may have far reaching, specific far reaching effects. The input received at such interaction events would be more critical to ensure that the final standards do live up to market expectations. Today's, today's exposure draft on transfers of assets prescribes the financial reporting principles and disclosure requirements. Applicable to all internal transfers of assets between investment pools related to and where material between significant categories of owners equity, quasi equity and off balance sheet assets under management of an institution. This, this standard requires adoption and consistent application of accounting policies for such internal transfers in line with Sharia principles and rules and describes general disclosure requirements in this respect. Now and without further ado, let me invite to the virtual floor Mr Omar Mustafa Ansari, AIOF's Secretary General. Who will present the exposure draft and walk you through its main content while answering time to time your questions in an interactive session. Brother Omar, please, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much brother Mast. أَعْزُبِ اللَّهِ مِنَ الشَّيْطَانِ الرَّجِيمِ بِسْمِ اللَّهِ الرَّحْمٰنِ الرَّحِيمِ رَبِّ شَهْلِي صَدْرِي وَيَسِيرْ لِيْأَمْرِي وَهَلُوْ الْوَقْتَ تَمِّي لِّلْسَانِي يَفْقَهُ قَالِي Ladies and gentlemen, Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh and good morning and good afternoon. I think in Dhaka it is already afternoon time, I believe. So majority today, I believe will be joining from Bangladesh Dhaka time. So but I can see also people from Malaysia. I think we had a quite a long list of, list of registrations. The people who have joined in as yet are not like, you know, equal to the number of registrations. But I hope the number will increase in due course. It is again a pleasure to be in front of you. Having the opportunity of discussing a short but important standard. Obviously, whatever standards we do, all of them have their own significance. But this standard in particular has its own significance with regard to some of the essential characteristics of Islamic finance. Related to, related to fair and equitable treatment between stakeholders. And actually, this is, this is a challenge for Islamic finance. To make sure that, make sure that all the stakeholders are treated with justice, with equitability and with fairness. And this treatment of stakeholders is actually transparently and fairly reported in the financial statements as well. So from that perspective, this standard is very important. And I would like to welcome you all again for it. And I hope it will be a very good interactive session. I would like to reiterate what brother Mast has mentioned about the collaboration that and support that we have received from CSBIB and BAFF. If our partners in Bangladesh and particularly the Bangladesh AIOF Fellows Forum. Who have been quite, you know, supportive for AIOF's initiatives. And I'm always happy to say that Bangladesh Islamic Finance Professionals are coming, you know, a big way. In Bangladesh globally, the size of Islamic banking in Bangladesh has grown exponentially last few, last three decades. We, we believe that the opportunities that are there are even bigger and Insha Allah, we are willing to explore the opportunities together. For the participants in Bangladesh, I would like to repeat that Insha Allah, this year we are as AIOF are planning our official visit to Bangladesh with one of the technical boards meeting and other events, Insha Allah. For which the initial discussions have started, I believe. And Insha Allah, we'll shortly be announcing that. So it will be a great pleasure to meet you all there physically as well, Insha Allah. So without further, in these introductory remarks, further time on this delay on this, this matter. I would like to bring you to the topic. The topic for today, if you allow me just a little bit background before I, I share the screen and share the presentation. I would like to mention that, as I mentioned, it is very important. We already have a standard on this topic. The present standard is also, I won't say it's a bad standard. It's a good standard that we already have. But obviously, a standard that was done maybe fifteen years back needs some improvement, some alignment with our newer standards, alignment with the newer framework. We need to consider some of the, some of the developments that are already there in the industry in this time for which we need to cater like, like for which we need to cater the, the, the increased needs of the industry. There are different new categories of stakeholders, new type of products that have been there. So we have to take into consideration most of these factors at the same time. So from that perspective, I, I believe that it is very important that we, we try to, we try to sort of understand first the need and, and, and the importance from the perspective of the stakeholders. The participative stakeholders who are the main subject of this standard, including shareholders as the first part. Type of participative stakeholders, but other participative stakeholders like quasi equity, which is normally based on Mudarba model. Similarly, the, the off balance sheet, off balance sheet assets under management, which can be on Wakala model or can be on restricted Mudarba model. Similarly, on balance sheet may include some of the Wakala that is, which is mingled with the on balance sheet Mudarba accounts. So these type of stakeholders have an interest in the underlying assets and their returns and profits and losses are actually determined based on the performance of those underlying assets. However, the banks are a running business. They are a banks and similar financial institution. The similar issues that we are talking about, we will be focusing more on the banking in today's discussion. But the same thing may be applicable on, on, on the Takaful side as well. Particularly where there are more than one unit linked funds and there is movement between the participant Takaful Fund and the participant investment fund etc. So there are a lot of, a lot of areas where we actually, actually have, have the, I would say a distinct set of stakeholders who have vested interest in the underlying asset of an investment pool. And that investment pool, if due to any reason, like you know, any justifiable reason has to transfer some of the underlying assets to another pool. Simply speaking, obviously, as running businesses, banks have to do it. Like for example, if there is, there is a withdrawal from, from, from the, from the quasi equity withdrawal from the, from the time and demand quasi equity, like we have saving accounts, we have term deposit accounts with Islamic financial institutions. And those accounts, if there is a maturity of, maturity of those accounts, for example, there is always a need for the, for the Islamic financial institution who is managing these pools. And they may either need to, need to encash some of the assets. Either you go to the market and sell the underlying assets, for example, if there are Sukuk available, you sell them. But for example, if they are not available, what will happen? Or if the bank does not feel it is suitable and if it is not Sukuk. Sukuk are easy to be sold to the market. But for example, the investment pool has a Mudarba and Musharka, Mudarba, Murabha, Ijarah. The normal Islamic finance products related tool. So those assets cannot be just sold in the market. Now, what can be happening here that either the bank increase the amount of its own equity in the investment pool? And let the amount of the quasi equity withdrawn from that. Or otherwise, the bank may come up with, 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 with the transfer, transfer transaction. Buying assets, some of the underlying assets of the respective investment pool are transferred to another investment pool. This is just the most simple example, but there are a lot of routine transactions like this. First thing we need to understand that from Sharia standpoint, these are actually sort of sale transactions. Because the set of stakeholders who is, who is the owner of the first investment pool is different from the set of stakeholders who are in the second investment pool. So from the bank's perspective, oh, we are managing it, we can just tag it from here to there. No, it's not about the matter of just tagging. It is about the transfer of assets which belong to one set of stakeholders to another set of stakeholders. This means that saying that, okay, we just tagged it from here to there is not the right reflection of the true nature of this activity from Sharia standpoint. And from Sharia standpoint, obviously, there are issues with regard to, with regard to the, 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 the conflict of interest. For examples, according to certain schools of thought, a transaction between a wakil and a seal, an agent and principal is not allowed. If it is allowed, it is allowed only with the expressed permission of the wakil. Of the, of the mokel principle. So for example, you ask me that Umar, you go and purchase a mobile phone for me. This is the specification of the mobile phone. I took your money and I had a mobile phone myself available similar to those characteristics. Instead of doing your activity as directed to purchase it from the market, actually I sold you my own mobile phone. If it is happening without a conflict of interest and if it is happening without your, with your expressed permission, that Umar, you can purchase it from yourself as well. Unless these conditions exist, according to majority of scholars, it will not be acceptable. However, the same thing applies that according to certain scholars. A person cannot be agent for both parties, buying and selling parties. Again, in some situation, this can be allowed by certain scholars according to certain very specific conditions. To make sure that there is no conflict of interest. So now let me put an example to you. There is a new customer coming in and that customer wants like, you know, ten percent rate. And I agree, okay, I'll create a pool for you where average rate of return that you gets expected will be ten percent. My normal average pool returns are seven percent. What I did, that there was an asset in the normal pool for twelve percent, having a return on twelve percent. I just transferred that twelve percent asset, yielding asset to the new pool. For making sure that I gave a ten percent return to this one. Is there anything wrong in that? Some people will say, no, it is perfectly alright because this is just about tagging the assets. I tagged it to this customer instead of the normal customers. But there are other people who will say that there is a issue of fairness here. There is a issue of equitable treatment here. So if this situation is providing a specific benefit. Then the transfer of the asset should be based on the fair value, not on the carrying value. Because the carrying value of this asset might be less than the fair value. Because if the average yield is eight, seven percent, then this asset may have a fair value above its carrying value. Similar situation, there are some Sukuk who have a higher fair value in the market. They are part of an investment pool. And I transferred them to my equity pool for trade transaction purposes. Is it the correct treatment? Did I do the right thing? Now, first we need to understand, we are talking about an accounting standard, not a governance standard, not a regulatory standard, not a Sharia standard. So from the accounting standpoint, the issue is fairness and equitability in accounting, reporting and transparency in disclosure. So this standard does not say that you cannot transfer in these situations. No, obviously, it's a business transaction. It is a, it has to happen according to the relevant Sharia requirements, relevant regulatory requirements and relevant contractual permissions. Unless these things are allowed contractually, you cannot do it. But considering this thing as a, as, 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 as a tool for playing with things. It should not happen like that. We are not just doing like, you know, Islamic banking is not just about playing with numbers. It is about doing a fair and transparent and equitable business. In, in which there are so many different stakeholders whose interests are to be safeguarded. So this accounting standard, the original one, even FAST twenty one that we have currently, that also tries to address these purposes. But we tried to improve to FAST twenty one. Now, why we tried to improve it? Because we were already working on revision of our FAST twenty seven that is on investment accounts. So we are coming up with the standard on quasi equity. We are coming up on, with the standard, the exposure drafts are already issued. So there are, there are, there is a series of exposure drafts. One on control, one on quasi equity and one on off balance sheet managed assets. And this is the fourth one, which has quite a relationship with that. But we do not make it part of the same project. Because it may have impacts additionally on Takaful and other type of Islamic financial institutions as well. So we do not combine it together with the investment accounts. Whatever principles etc are contained herein are also to be applied in case of Takaful and other Islamic financial institutions. So this is a little bit of the background about this standard and the issue that we want to address here. And I would appreciate if we can have any comments, any questions, any clarification with regard to this conceptual part that I have discussed. And then I'll take you through the presentation. So I can see there is a, one comment in the Q and A box. Let me see it. There are some, some comments and I think there are some, there is a chat window is active, so I'm not sure. Anybody who want to put a comment, you should be please putting in, in the, putting it in the Q and A tab. Okay, anonymous attendee has raised a question for a common member of AIOF. Disqualification of any member can occur due to Sharia non-compliance of fraudulent activities that may impact AIOF's reputation. I kindly seek advice on how to report a matter to AIOF to obtain an opinion. I, I'm sorry, this is completely unrelated to today's, today's discussion. AIOF cannot be responsible for the acts of its members. But, but if this is anything that impacts the reputation of AIOF in any manner, in a way that it is reflected by such member, either fellow or member, that, that somehow his or its actions are supported by AIOF, in that situation, we may, we may need to raise this matter to them. So from that perspective, I would suggest if you can just, just write an email to us. At, you can just approach me directly at oansari@aof.com. oansari@aof.com for any of such matter. But I, I'm not, I'm not saying that we will take a punitive action or anything. The only thing is that we highly appreciate that you can, are concerned about AIOF's reputation. And for sure, we need to safeguard our reputation as a responsibility towards industry. So from that perspective, we will be more than happy. I, I, I'm just writing my email address. However, I would just request to keep, keep confined to today's topic. No further discussions on this topic are encouraged for today. Okay. So do we have any, any comments? Now I can see there are more than one hundred, nearly one hundred and seven members. A very ironic thing, I can see that brother Mizbahudin, our very respectable brother, dear brother Mizbahudin Ahmed is attending the meeting twenty or more times. So probably what has happened that brother Mizbah has forwarded his invitation link to so many people, that I can understand. Otherwise, I don't know how, how he has learned this cloning, that he has joined it for maybe twenty, more than twenty. Or on a lighter note, I hope that he is not just showing an attendance, oh, so many people, so he has joined from twenty different devices. I would suggest that anybody who has joined it with another person's ID can kindly go and change and rename themselves. Rename option is always available. So they can rename themselves. So if they interact, interact with us, they're, they're like, you know, their interaction would be identified with their name, like in form of if they send a comment or if they want to talk. So with that, anybody has any initial comments? Anyway, brother, welcome to brother Mizbah. And I can see some very senior people being here. So welcome to all of you. I would just like to ask if anybody has any comments on the initial conceptual part, otherwise I'll move to the presentation.
Mustafa, about your husband.
Okay, a hand is raised. Okay, let me see. Who has raised his hand? Okay, this is brother Fanzafar, please. I, I, I think we should be, you, you have, I think, as a, you have made him a panelist. I think you should allow speaking without making panelist, the normal processes like this. Okay? Just, you can go ahead, brother Fahn, please. Brother Fahn, you can go ahead, please. Your hand is no more raised. Okay? Okay, then Sister Nigat Tanvir has also raised her hand.
He said it was a mistake, by mistake.
Okay, okay. Sister Nigat, you have also raised your hand. So please go ahead, sister.
Thank you so much, dear brother Umar. First of all, I would again like to congratulate AIOF for being so very helpful. Allowing us to attend these sessions which are very fruitful. Earlier, we attended similar sessions, but every time, whenever we attend, we learn new things. I have one question or comment and you may answer it right now or may park it for later stage. The thing or the terminology, intangible assets. I believe that perhaps AIOF needs to issue some sort of document explaining the rationale of why sometimes the trading of such instruments are allowed. Why we, I mean, the relationship with the, the tradability of those assets. Maybe based on their specific nature, whether they are consumable or not, or something like that. Because over the passage of time, we've seen that the services or such, just like trademarks or even patents. That sort of assets are keep on increasing. So perhaps AIOF separately issues some information or some information document to give or for the understanding of the market. So that we, we know the rationale of allowing them with respect to their tradability, with respect to their prices and related Sharia issues. Because in some of the, the assets, there are some issues and some of the assets, they are not. So broader categorization would be quite helpful for the people who are joining Islamic finance industry. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Sister Nigat. First, thanks for your kind words of appreciation for our efforts and it is highly encouraging. Secondly, senior people like you from Central Bank attending these events so regularly is very much encouraging for us. So because we are able to get very high level input in that. So you are always welcome and thank you very much for sparing time for this thing. Thirdly, thank you very much again for your kind comment. It's a good comment. We will take it to the board as to how, to what extent we need to provide further guidance on this issue. A little bit of it will be discussed in the definition when we reach there. But with regard to, with regard to the, to further going, going into this, I think it's an important point. We, we need to consider that how much further guidance is needed. There is a standard from IFRS on intangible assets. Normally, our approach is that we do not reproduce standards in the areas where there is no direct sort of, sort of direct value addition from AIOF's perspective concerning Sharia compliance and considering the business model. But I would request my colleagues, Sister Farida, if you can just make a note of it. That on tangible assets, we should perform a review of the current intangible assets standard from IFRS and evaluate if there is anything to be considered from Sharia standpoint. So that is a small study that we need to do. And with that study, we'll take it to the, to the board and we'll ask if they feel that there is a need to have further guidance or a standard in this. I don't think at all that there is a need for having a standard in that area. But for sure, with regard to the comments of, from Sister Nigat, if we need to provide some guidance on that. Sister Nigat, your hand is raised. So you want to add something again? Please.
Yes, yes. Again, when I'm saying about this intangible assets, these are not necessarily, I mean, from the perspective of accounting or even governance. It is the holistic sort of document. So it may not necessarily be a standard. It could be sort of a guidance document, but I, I think if there is a flavor of Sharia side over there, that would also be beneficial. So it is, it is sort of, you may call the Supra sort of thing rather than, I mean, classifying them in, in the accounting standard side or others. So it, it is not the standard I'm talking about. I think you have very rightly mentioned that it should be something general, something covering all the aspects. Thank you so much, brother.
Thank you very much, sister. I think I highly appreciate your comment and we'll take note of it. Now, before taking more questions on audio, I think we have two, two, two questions. Now, before taking more questions on audio, I think we have two 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 questions coming in here. First is from brother Numanul Hassan. Brother Numanul Hassan, if I'm recognizing you correctly from Path Solutions, that is Asenshu, uh then you are highly welcome because this is one of the most important areas where your input will be very much useful. Uh if I recognize correctly, you are from Asenshu. So welcome. And your point is very important. I think further discussion on this will be done in due course, but let me just quickly address the question. So you say that considering the asset transfer happen frequently, the evaluation will result in gain, loss and change in depreciation which may not be practical. Uh brother Numan, uh I highly appreciate your comment. But let me tell you one thing. Uh our my mentor, uh our you know, when I was in EY, he used to be our boss and he was in AOFI's governance accounting and government accounting board earlier in two thousand six, seven. Later, he was in our governance board for for two terms, Mr. Ibrahim Siddat. Uh he always used to say one thing. He said, accounting is nothing by itself. And my another mentor, one of the partners in EY, he used to say that whatever information account auditors need, the management needs it first. Means that if auditors are asking for any information and the management says, we don't have this information. It means that management is ineffective or is sorry to say lying. Means that whatever information auditor is asking, it is always the first need of the management to have it. So the question here is, brother, the gain or loss is coming because of my accounting? Even in accounting, we are not insisting on that. I'll come to that. We are we are saying that there should be proper policies, et cetera. But the point is that it is not coming because I am uh I'm uh I'm 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 asking you to do a transaction like this. No. Actually, brother, you are doing transactions. You are not just realizing that you are doing transaction. If I am transferring the assets from one pool of asset to another pool of asset, it means that I as an agent or mudharib selling the the assets that belong to the first set of stakeholders to the second set of stakeholders. So it's not only a tagging issue. We need to understand what the transaction we are doing from Sharia standpoint. From Sharia standpoint, we are actually taking the right of one party, the assets which are the right of one party and transferring them to another set of stakeholders who may be completely different. And I am mudharib for both. They are not doing this transaction independently between each other. Rather, I am executing this transaction between the two parties. So while I fully agree with you that this is difficult, we just want the industry to realize for that what they are doing is a transaction, is a sale. And it is not just a hypothetical thing that, okay, at the end of the month, I'll sit and I'll put some assets there and some assets there like this. No. Or even at the beginning, doing at the end of the month is wrong, we all know. Doing at the beginning of the month also has its own issues, like for example, transferring like this without actually doing. And there are other issues also like the tangibility ratio issue. So if I just transfer a muraba from one set of stakeholders to another stake set of stakeholder without bundling it with other assets, to me, sorry to say, it might be considered haram. I'm not Mufti myself, but I may consider it haram because you just transferred a receivable at a value different than its par value. So you are saying, oh, we are eliminating reba from the economy and you are doing a reba-based transaction internally yourself. So there are challenges in that. We fully understand. We will come to more discussions on this part and I think we will be highly appreciating uh your comments and input because I I think that you can very well understand these issues. Thank you very much, brother Numan. And I think some discussion will come back in our uh as the way as we go on our way with the presentation. Uh there is an anonymous attendee. All the time I request any anonymous attendee may kindly put their name. You can rename yourself. Can you please provide examples on quasi-equity and off-balance-sheet assets? This is a new issue to me. I have no experience in investment pool. Sorry if the question is basic. There is no harm in asking any question, even if it is basic. Uh this is very simple that as per AOFI standards, the normal saving accounts and investment accounts, what we generally call urea in the region, unrestricted investment accounts, or in some countries, we call them PLS deposits. They are quasi-equity because they have the element of equity and they have the element of of redemption and or upput option. So we consider them quasi-equity. On quasi-equity, we have issued exposure draft recently so that that I would suggest you to read. And we will be holding public hearings shortly. So we can have more discussion on that on that. On the off-balance-sheet managed assets, we believe that all balance sheet that anything that is done purely in a in an agency capacity like Wakala Bilishtas Mark and some of the activities that we do on a restricted mudarba basis, they do not meet the definition of control. So if they do not meet the definition of control, so in those situations, according to uh the accounting concepts, even under IFRS, if the control is not established, something cannot come on your on your balance sheet. And from AOFI, we have clarified these matters in more detail. So from our perspective, uh those become off-balance-sheet managed assets. We say that they do not become part of your balance sheet, but you need to have a disclosure statement for that. The disclosure statement related guidance is available in our financial accounting standard number one, and we have issued recently uh a the technical release on illustrative financial statements for Islamic banks and similar financial institutions. You can have lot of guidance as to how these are presented and what should be disclosed in those documents. Thank you very much. And I will appreciate if you can rename yourself uh in the in the in the in the in the zone. Okay, so next question is brother Mohammed Atiqul Rahman Khan Khadim. In Bangladesh, we do not have multiple asset pool as mudarba. Matalak is the only investment account for the investors. Apart for apart from these, we have shareholders' equity. Hence, as the ED is on transfer of assets against man uh among multiple asset pools, it would give great insight to the participants for the Bangladesh market. Thank you for engaging us in the lovely initiative. Thank you very much, brother Matiqul Rahman. And it is good to know uh like you know the approach that you are following in Bangladesh. Uh if you ask me personally, I believe that it is better to keep the investment pools as limited as possible. But keeping only one investment pool actually has its own limitations as well. So from that perspective, it will be uh it will be uh it will be a it will be a pro uh it will be like, you know, a problem in ongoing basis. There are other issues as well, like you know, why investment pools are created. We are working on a exposure draft on that on the which will be shortly issued, Insha Allah, the governance of investment accounts. So the pool-related governance requirements, et cetera, and why pools are needed and some of the fairness and equity aspects will be covered in that as well. So I think on the governance side, some of those aspects will be covered that can guide the local market additionally. Thank you very much, brother. Brother Numanul Hassan noted and welcome again, brother. Okay, so we have brother Nurul Kabir who has raised his hand. So let's listen to him. If you can just allow him to speak. Brother Nurul Kabir, please. You can speak, brother. Your hand was raised. Okay, your hand is removed now. So I think we should move ahead with our presentation now. Okay, first question. So many people ask every time that that uh are we actually? Uh can you see the screen? Okay, I hope the screen can be can be seen. So so every time people ask, are we going to share the presentation? The quick answer is the presentation is only a PowerPoint version of the exposure draft. The exposure draft is already shared on shared on our website. And I think in the chat window, the team has already provided either the exposure draft itself or its link. Am I right? The yes, the the link to the the link to the exposure draft is already available in the chat window. So anybody who want to have a look at the document, they they should go to the uh exposure draft directly. The presentation here is just a PowerPoint version of the same exposure draft. So it is normally not shared. Another thing that I would like to mention, uh the 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 public hearing today is being recorded. And for the purpose of learning, it will be uploaded on our web on our YouTube channel. And I think that we are already in a process of uploading whatever recordings were available for our public hearings on our YouTube channel. So so I'll probably a large number of public hearings which can serve actually as a learning session as well about our standards uh will be available uh on our YouTube channel. You are all advised to go to that. And secondly, as always, I would request you to provide your comments in writing as well. Uh now coming to the preface and and introduction section, as I have taken quite a lot of time on the comment on the on the introduction about the standard and the conceptual background of the standard. So I'm not going to go in detail except for only identifying the key differences. Some of the differences I had already identified in my discussion. But I'll quickly take you through to I N four, which is about the significant changes from the current standard that is FAS twenty-one. Just to clarify, once this standard becomes applicable, FAS twenty-one will be superseded. Uh now coming to uh the significant changes that we have. Uh the the first one is earlier standard was limited to the disclosure requirements of transfer of assets. The revised standard prescribes the financial reporting requirements as well as general and specific disclosure requirements. So we have added a little bit of financial reporting requirements. Secondly, the revised requirement required standard requires accounting policies to be developed consistently, applied and disclosed. It was not clear. Uh it was not required. I think disclosure was required, but but the development of accounting policies and their implementation was not required. The terminology and definition is in the standard are aligned with AOFI conceptual framework, the new conceptual framework and new FAS one. I think Sister Farida uh uh with the okay, the next point is about FAS one, the presentation and disclosure requirements. But I think Sister Farida terminology and definitions are also aligned with FAS one. So if you can just make a note of it, that that terminology and definitions are aligned with the framework and FAS one. And the presentation and disclosure requirements have been requirement have been updated in line with the FAS one. Okay? So in C, I think we should also mention FAS one. The the financial reporting requirements are aligned with the Sharia requirements on transfer of asset between investment pools by providing definitions of tangibility ratio, monetary assets and non-monetary assets. So these are some new definitions that we have inserted uh to ensure better level of Sharia compliance in that matter. Uh as I as I mentioned, I'm not discussing in detail the preface and introduction because I have provided detailed introduction already. But I would request the participants, if they have any comment on the if they have any comment on the uh on the uh on the introduction and preface part, please feel free to discuss today or to send us in writing. Objective of the standard, the objective of the standard is to establish the financial reporting principles that apply in respect of internal transfer of assets between various investment pools of an Islamic financial institution. For just to clarify, it is not for banks only. I have mentioned this thing earlier as well that this may apply to to Takaful and it may apply to certain other types of financial institutions, including asset managers. Score. The standard shall apply to all transfers of assets between investment pools related to and where material between significant categories of owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance-sheet assets under management of an institution. Now, where we are clarifying this part, where material between significant categories of. So when we say uh that it is actually possible that owner's equity may have more than one category. Uh there can be some Sukuk that can be classified as owner equity tier two cap tier one capital and they may actually be consisting of a similar pool. Uh similarly, quasi-equity may be comprising of different pools related to different categories of quasi-equity as well. You can have multiple categories of quasi-equities as well. For example, the normal category of quasi-equity is the investment accounts that we have, but you are restricted investment accounts. But there can be like quasi-equity Sukuk. Uh there can be other type of instruments like that as well. And similarly, there can be different categories of off-balance-sheet assets under management of an institution. So considering the requirements, we actually have to consider these requirements of this standard applicable on these as well as significant categories as well where applicable. In the Q and A tab, uh okay. I think there is a there is an incomplete comment in the Q and A tab. I I just request you to kindly complete it before I can I'm able to respond to it, please. Okay, now the trans the assets transferred for the purpose of application of the standard include all monetary and non-monetary assets. Coming to definitions. First, investment pool. Investment pool in the specific context of the standard comprises of distinct assets whose risks and rewards wholly or proportionately are attributable to funding provided by respective investors within owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance-sheet assets under management of an institution. It is what generally a virtual entity and at times a separate reporting entity. Like in case of Sukuk, it can be a separate reporting entity as well, but otherwise generally it is a virtual entity. Any comments? I think we okay, that comment is still incomplete. Okay. Okay, we just now received two, three comments on the Q and A tab. So let me take them. Uh brother Mohammed Mukhtarul Islam, dear brother, can we put examples on the owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance-sheet assets for better understanding and clarity? Uh brother Mukhtar uh Mukhtarul Islam, I just take a note of your point and we will take it to the working group if the working group agrees with you because these things are not discussed in this standard only. There there is a specific standard on quasi-equity. There is a specific standard on off-balance-sheet assets under management. There as owner's equity, we don't have a separate standard. Uh it is covered in the FAS one. But the quest point is that as you raise this issue, we will take it to the working group and the board and we will see if they feel there is a need to add anything here. Uh or otherwise, we can create a cross-reference to the other standards as well. So I think that we will we I cannot respond to you. It'll just we'll take your comment to the board itself. Thank you very much for your comment, brother. Uh brother Sadqat Khan has a comment. Salaam alaikum, brother Sadqat Khan and sir all welcome. Uh I think honestly, I I'll with every time I I feel so happy that senior people like you are taking time to attend these public hearings and sharing your rich experience with us. Uh brother Sadqat Khan's comment is definitions include the following: investment pool, the following may be mentioned to have a clear understanding, unrestricted common mudarba investment pool and restricted mudarba investment pool. Uh uh but but the Sadqat Khan, I can understand your point, but the point is that restricted mudarba investment pool goes to off-balance-sheet and some of these things are defined in other standards. I can well understand now that if that some if a senior person like you can have some some confusion about it. So we might need to provide some explanation to that or some guidance on that. So Sister Sister Farida, can you make a note of it uh of the comment to by brother Mukhtarul Islam and brother Sadqat Khan that we may need to provide some guidance on that? Now, that can be in form of an appendix, that can be through a reference to other standards or it can be covered sort of in maybe in appendix or basis of conclusion. But just make a note of it. We will try to do that. I do not commit because we are not using the term unrestricted common mudarba investment pool or restricted mudarba investment pool. But we are using different terms, but we should explain that what is included, where these things are included. So I will Insha Allah uh take you take it to working group and we'll see Insha Allah. Thank you very much again, sir. Brother Sadqat Khan has a additional comment. I think it is continuing with that, non-monetary assets. I think that the financing and investing assets by the institution to its customer may also be mentioned to avoid any interpretation that is muraba musharaka under the modes of financing. Uh sir, we note we note your point. We'll see as to how much explanation can be provided. Maybe some explanation we can provide in the basis of conclusion. Thank you. Maybe some explanation we can provide in the basis of conclusion. Thank you very much, sir, again. Okay, then we have a comment from Lim Hillman, Dear Mr. Omar, the standard must contain the effective time limit for transferring assets from the old owner to the new owner after the transaction is made as a basis for valuation and presentation in a financial statement. Uh on one hand, I feel it's an excellent comment, an excellent comment. Uh but the question is, uh would it be an accounting issue or a governance issue? Uh here I'm, I'm, I'm just like, you know, asking myself and asking all of you, uh like, you know, participants here. That while this comment is an excellent comment, that uh, that uh, that there should be a time limit for, for the transferring of assets. So now either we say that it happens in a second. In the, in the governance standard, with regard to transfer of assets between pools, we are introducing an idea of having, I think Pakistan actually in their, in their, in their pool management guidance, they have this concept of having a sort of deal ticket sort of thing. So when you do a transaction in treasury, you have a deal ticket, you just mention the assets which are being sold or purchased. So it's a similar option uh of like, you know, similar, like, you know, option of having a deal ticket sort of documentation or a transfer documentation is very important. Uh but uh like, you know, uh the point is that since I am the agent of both parties, means I am a Mudharib or agent of both the parties. I am the working partner uh like or, or Mudharib or agent, this is the correct term. I am, either I am working partner or Mudharib or agent of the, of both parties. Then in that situation, the transaction, I'm just thinking, in my view, executes immediately. Because if I am agent for you and I am agent for brother Sadakat and I want to do the transaction. Maybe the time limit may not become an issue. However, the process of this execution of transaction in which include obviously, because it's not about making an offer. One option is on the governance side, again, it will not be an accounting issue, it will be a governance issue. But on one side, it can be an option that within the organization, there should be different people in charge for each of the pools to safeguard the interest. So for example, uh there are five pools, so five officials should be appointed as in charge for taking and making transactions. So one of them makes an offer, then the other one on behalf of the other pool accepts it. This might have its own problems, but again, as I mentioned, it's a governance issue, not an accounting issue. I'm just thinking from accounting standpoint that since I'm the agent of both the parties, agent, working partner, Mudharib of both the parties. So as soon as I do it, it is done. Only thing is, from governance standpoint, we need to bring in a standardized procedure for that. So thank you very much for your very important comment. Uh we take a note of it, we take it to the working group and to the board, how they see it, whether they see it the same way as I'm saying that it executes immediately because I am agent for both, or they have a different view, we will take note of it, we'll take it to uh we'll take it to the working group and see how they see it. Sister Farida make, also make a note of it that you need to maybe forward it to the governance standards team who is working on the investment accounts management standard. So because this is an important point with regard to the time of execution and time limit on execution. Thank you very much again for this very useful comment. Okay, we have a comment from brother Jamil Ahmed Qureshi, what is your view on creating a number of special pools consisting of only one and sometimes only two customers and transferring high yielding assets to those pools? Another scenario is keeping aside high yielding assets to the equity pool which owns solely to the bank. What is the regular practice in a jurisdiction? Now, uh it is a very complicated issue, partially accounting, partially governance, but let me try to mention. First thing, you need to see what was the importance and benefit of creating those special pools. So for example, if the benefit is, is to the, all the stakeholders, for example. Uh I, my pool size is one billion, out of which there is a withdrawal. Today, there is a, there is a investor who withdraws one hundred million, now one, ten percent of the pool size is big, or even five percent of the pool size is big. Now what happens that I need to pay him that one hundred million, but that one hundred million is right now stuck in assets. So I have only two options, either I go to the market and I sell the assets. I will not be able to find a purchaser for all the assets, particularly if the assets do not include Sukuk. So I cannot just sell the, the Murabha receivables and Ijarah assets. It's not easy unless they are under, uh there is a Sukuk. So if they assume there are Sukuk, obviously there is an option of selling the Sukuk, but if there are no Sukuk, what I can do? Assume equity, I don't have enough equity available, not, now what I do? I need to go to the treasury market. And again, I would like to reiterate and I mention it every time, that as A O P, we do not uh we do not uh you know, recommend and appreciate Tawarok. So we assume that either the transaction when the treasury is done by Muddarba or Mush, or Wakala by creating a special pool. Now, this is in line with your question. Now what happens that a Mudha, a Wakala pool is created, but now if I go to treasury, the rate that will be expected by the treasury investor or the high net worth individual or the counter-financial institution, that will be higher than the average return that I'm giving to my urea investors who are part of the normal pool. So it means that it might be, uh but if I don't do it, what will happen? I will not be able to pay back to the depositor and the whole bank will be in a trouble. The customer will go to the court, it will be a hue and cry that the bank is unable to pay to the depositors. Obviously, bank cannot stop the depositors who withdraw their money. So in that situation, we will be in a bad shape, not only for the shareholders, but for the whole of the bank. So it is in the interest of the whole of the bank to create a treasury pool to have high yielding assets transferred to that so that a proper return can be given to that one. Now, this is for the benefit of the whole of the bank, including urea, including shareholders and others. Now, taking another example, I don't want to do it. This is not the issue that there is a withdrawal from the common pool etcetera. Now there is only a high yielding asset that I want to, like, you know, I want to uh uh there, there are normal, you know, normal assets coming in. So I have now low yield assets coming in. So I decide, let, let's have this low yielding assets in the common pool. So now, let's assume there were hundred million of low yielding assets coming in. Okay, so I put them here and I take out the high yielding asset in my equity pool. Or I take it to another pool where I want to compensate to somebody, give advantage to somebody as a high return because he's a high net worth individual. Now, for me, this might be unfair. So the first thing was fair and the second thing is unfair because you are giving an advantage to a high net worth individual at the cost of the, uh, uh, at the cost of the normal depositors, normal urea. So this is a issue that has to be considered on a case-to-case basis. On a situation-to-situation basis, basis. And that's why we have not imposed these things, like, you know, on the accounting side particularly. On the accounting side, we are mainly talking about having the right accounting policy, having the right set of uh uh having the right set of like sort of uh governance principles etcetera that can actually do it. And we just make sure that we have transparency, disclosure and appropriate accounting. And accounting is the reflection of the business fact, so what you did has, has to be reflected. Now coming back to the, to this point, that uh yeah, this is a regular practice, we know in the large number of countries. Uh this is a common practice in so many, uh so many different financial institutions. We believe it, it may have an advantage to the bank as a whole and to, including the quasi-equity because of like, you know, a genuine need and it can be having the elements of unfair treatment also. So for me, it is to be justified on a case-to-case basis and it has to be done on a fair basis. And for me, if in this situation, the high yielding asset is transferred at fair value, that partially addresses the issue of fair treatment. But we did not insist on this, we said if the fair value is the basis, that is good. But if the fair value is not the basis, then you need to disclose the basis and reason for that. I think your point was very good, I think I have been able to partially address it. Uh some, some of its aspects might be addressed in due course as we move ahead with the standard. We have comment from brother Abdurrahman Al Sheh, welcome brother. With regard to transferring of assets between shareholder's pool and general pool, any transfer between both pools should include a sale contract as assets were purchased by one pool and sold to another pool. This is important issue to discuss with the official Sharia committee if, if it, if they may have serious implications. Uh brother Abdurrahman Al Sheh, welcome again, brother. Uh uh you are always welcome, thank you very much for joining in. And a very good comment that you have raised, I fully agree with you. I think the approach that we have taken in the, in a, in this standard is about disclosure and equi, and equitable accounting. But this issue of a sale contract, I was just mentioning the example of a deal ticket. Deal ticket is like a sale contract that you are transferring from one pool to another pool or a transfer document that you need to do. I fully agree, it's a sale contract and it should be, but, 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 but how it should be done, it's a governance issue. Not an accounting issue, how do you execute that sale contract? And what controls you put on that to make sure that justice and equitable treatment is there? That is a issue of governance, not accounting. So yes, Insha Allah, we are addressing this issue on the governance side. We will be, uh we like, you know, coming up with a governance exposure draft on investment account shortly. So I think this issue will be addressed in that, uh in that exposure draft. Thank you very much for a very good, a very valid comment, brother. Now, investment pool definition is done, monetary assets. Uh why monetary asset, non-monetary asset, we are putting definition here? Because we realized in the transfer of asset, there is a risk of Sharia non-compliance. I have pool A, I have pool B, I transfer only one Murabha receivable from pool A to pool B. According to Sharia, a receivable cannot be transferred at a value other than par value. But normally when we, I do this transfer, I do it at the net value, that is Murabha receivable minus deferred profit. If I'm following A O P, if I'm not following A O P, under I F R S, I just transfer it at the net value. Which is close to the interest-based accounting principal value. So what happens that to me, unfortunately, it is like Reba. I'm saying to the outside world that, okay, we are doing Reba-free, Reba-free banking and we are offering you Reba-free banking. But what I'm doing at the backend is actually something close to Reba. This is something that monetary assets as per Sharia cannot be transferred other than a value other than par value, you cannot that transfer them at a higher value, you cannot transfer them at a lower value. However, if you create a bundle, in that bundle, you have fifty-one percent of non-monetary assets and forty-nine percent of monetary assets. You can transfer that bundle and in that situation, you can transfer the monetary assets at a value which is receivable minus deferred profit. Or another value that you can apply to the whole of the bundle together. This is something which is a significant Sharia non-compliance that we have observed in Islamic financial institutions. And because just you pick one Murabha receivable and transfer to other, this is wrong, incorrect. For me, haram, other scholar, uh like, you know, the scholars generally have a view like this. Sharia is, the Sharia standards of A O P have a clear view, you cannot transfer like this. But the problem is, people don't understand the application issue. Application issue is that transfer from one pool to another, transfer from owner's equity to investment, investors' pool or from investors' pool to owner equity. This is like a sale, so the principle of sale of monetary asset has to be applied. This is where our understanding of Sharia compliance is weak and implementation of Sharia compliance is weak. Otherwise, I think all of you understand the principle that the monetary assets as per Sharia cannot be applied, transferred without uh without like, you know, the uh with the, at, at a value other than the par value. So here we have defined the monetary assets, non-monetary assets and tangibility criteria. Monetary asset in the specific context of this standard for the purpose of computation of tangibility ratio are assets that are in the form of either. Now, there are two issues, so first issue is about transfer. The second issue is, second issue is, application on the whole pool. Now, I created one pool which includes only Tawarok or receivable. We don't like Tawarok, I again, whenever I mention to Tawarok, I do not want to encourage it. But I'm taking a real example of lot of Islamic financial institutions. So some Islamic financial institutions have only Tawarok on the front end, on the, on the underlying assets. Now, if all my assets are Tawarok, which means it's a receivable. Or if all my assets are Tawarok and Murabha in form of receivable. The question is, if an investor comes in and an investor goes out, what is this transaction as per Sharia? If an investor comes in then that pool, as per Sharia, he is purchasing proportionately the underlying assets. If a person goes out of the investment pool, from the Sharia perspective, he is actually going, uh going out by selling his proportionate share of underlying assets. If these underlying assets are only receivables, then what happens? So I'm purchasing receivables, I'm selling receivables at a value other than par value. We understand that there are uh some differentiating Sharia views on these matters. But as plain reading of A O P Sharia standards, what I'm telling you is that it is not acceptable and based on my earlier understanding discussions with scholars. At least a minimum tangibility ratio has to be maintained in an investment pool in which people come in and go out. And this is a question for those banks who have only Tawarok on the underlying assets. That on one hand, they are doing a transaction which is less preferred by Sharia. And on the other hand, the investment accounts are also having this challenge of in and out through a purchase of a receivable at a value other than par value of that. This is something that has its own challenges. So the tangibility ratio applies primarily on each investment pool. And then you need to make sure that the bundle of asset that is transferred is also having the reasonable tangibility. Then monetary assets in the, in the special context include cash, contractual right to receive cash or another monetary asset from another institution. So Murabha and Tawarok receivables will be here, contractual right to exchange a monetary asset with another institution or en, entity. This is also equal into that. Non-monetary assets in the specific context of the standard for the purpose of computation of tangibility issue in line with Sharia principles and rules may include tangible assets, that is assets that are physical such as property, plant and equipment and inventory, equity instruments. Because they have at a underlying, they have their own, like, you know, it's like, you know, intrinsic permissibility. Sukuk and other instruments whereby the majority of underlying assets are tangible assets. So Sukuk and other instruments where at least fifty-one percent in line with our BevDhan standard are majority of the underlying assets are tangible assets and intangible assets, for example, right-of-fuse assets in case of Ijarah and other. So these are the assets that are to be considered not tangible for the purpose of uh now, these are to be considered non-monetary for the purpose of application of the tangibility ratio. Sharia principles and rules are as defined in our other standards. Tangibility ratio in the specific context of the standard is the ratio defined by the institution in line with Sharia principles and rules, particularly our standard number fifty-nine. Acceptable for the purpose of transfer of an asset or a bundle of assets from investment pool to another when it involves debt. Sister Farida, just make a note of it because after this, we have been working on the investment accounts standard. So both elements, because right now in the discussion that I had, there are two elements, one is the One is the transfer element and one is the element where an investment account holder comes in and goes out. So we, while we were working on the governance standard, we realized that that angle also has to be addressed. So maybe we need to make an amendment to this definition. Okay? You got, you got my point? So one is tangibility, applicability on the transfer of bundle. And the second is, every investment pool need to have intangible assets as needed. Okay? But both of these tangibility ratios can be different, differently defined by Sharia. Transfer of assets in the specific context of the standard is the, is the transfer of assets from one investment pool to another, whether on balance sheet or off balance sheet by way of either sale, exchange, investment, clearing or other. For example, Heba in line with a contractual arrangement complying with Sharia principles and rules. I think there are some comments in the Q and A box. Brother Abdurrahman Al Sheikh has another comment. Okay, Dr. Mansoor Al Khudai is there. Thank you very much brother for being here. Welcome. You are always welcome and thanks for joining in. I think the following, it is permitted to establish the investment pools with the following guidelines. The bank shall establish the new independent investment pool with assets specifically assigned to each of the pools. Uh it is not permitted to transfer assets from one investment pool to other, but it is permitted to sell assets from one investment pool to another at fair value, at evaluated internally at the bank by finance department. Valuation of assets must be at fair price without any solicitation or unfair practices with respect to other investors on the investment pool assets. The reasons for selling that relevant assets with justification must be presented to SSB for review and approval before execution. Considering the asset transfer happen frequently, the revolution will result in gain-loss or change in depreciation which may not be practical. I think this comment is coming from an earlier comment as well. So brother Mansoor Al Khudai, thank you very much. You just said the right thing, fully agreed. Only thing is that this standard is more about accounting. We are, as I'm discussing again and again, we are working on the governance standard also. So your points are well taken. Sister Farida, make note of it. We need to write it down to what extent, working group will decide to what extent it will be considered in the accounting side. And to what extent we need to forward this comment to the governance standards team so that they can incorporate it there. But again, brother Dr. Mansoor Al Khudai, Allah bless you. You said exactly what was in my mind. Uh thank you very much sir. Okay, we have comment from Danyar Mamirov. In Karghistan, we have legislation for both unrestricted mudaba and restricted, and restricted mudaba. But Islamic windows use at the moment, the beginning only unrestricted mudarva pool. Thank you very much for, for the, for the knowledge sharing. A question, if you can add to it, are the windows having only one single unrestricted mudarva pool or they have more than one pool? So that is a question if you can let us know for our knowledge. Thank you very much. Uh we have a comment from brother Muhammad Jiddat Tom. Can you have more examples of intangible assets in practical aspects? Uh we have used the term, we have used the term non-monetary assets. Uh okay, you just want to us to add examples of intangible assets, we will do that surely. I think this is something we will take your comment to the working group and we'll try to incorporate that. Now, it, it is happening like you know, which happens many, many a times that actually we are running short of time, although it was a short standard and I thought we will be able to do it in one and a half hour. But I think it was so interesting discussion that we are, uh we have, but I think we have discussed most of the significant issues. So, uh so, uh okay, we, we just received a question, which method is better to use the developing Islamic finance market? Separate investment account method or pooling method? I think pools are necessary, pools are necessary, but we, you, you might need to have more than one pool in case of need. Thank you very much again. Okay, let's move ahead. What I suggest, now I will summarize the whole standard and will take comments towards the end. Because again, uh like it happens lot of times that public hearing sessions, we don't have like you know, enough time to review the standard word by word. So let me try to quickly go. Uh now, first thing is about the policies. An institution shall adopt and consistently apply accounting policies in respect of transfer of assets between in various investment pools in line with the requirements of this standard and other relevant AOF phases and applicable Sharia principles and rules. Uh duly considering, sister Farida, I think we need to mention governance standard here also. Uh I'm just thinking that we might need to refer to it. Just make a note of it if the working group agrees. Because there will be some aspect about it in line with governance standards. Duly considering the business model of the institution as well as the contractual arrangements with the respective stakeholders. Presentation and disclosure. An institution shall follow the general presentation and disclosure requirements stated in FAS one and, and other phases, respectable phases. Uh like in case of Takafu latest presently FAS. Now it is changed sister. I think you need to change FAS twelve to FAS forty-two. FAS fourteen is still under revision, but FAS twelve will be changed to FAS forty-two because FAS forty-two is now issued. At that time, it was, when we issued the exposure draft, it was, FAS forty-two was the exposure draft. Okay, then presentation and disclosure. Uh an institution shall disclose in reasonable detail the accounting policies adopted in respect of transfer of asset between investment pools. Such disclosure of accounting policies shall include as applicable the following categories of transfers. A, transfers from owner's equity to a category or investment pool within a quasi-equity and vice versa. Transfer from owner's equity to a category or investment pool within of balance sheet assets under management and vice versa. Transfer within categories of owner's equity. Transfer from a category or investment pool within quasi-equity to a category or investment pool of off-balance sheet assets under management and vice versa. Transfer from a category or investment pool within quasi-equity to another category of investment pool within quasi-equity. Transfers from a category or investment pool within off-balance sheet assets under management to another category or investment pool within off-balance sheet assets under management. So we have covered all type of, there are three types. So we have covered all type of transfers in the disclosure requirement. But again, if the bank has only one or two type of transfer, they will include only those one or two types. Uh A, it's a very important point. It's a presumption that transfers between, to refer to in B, D and F of paragraph seven may not require development of a specific accounting policy separately for the purpose of compliance with the requirement of the standard. As the same are already covered in the accounting policies applicable for recognition and derecognition developed in line with relevant AOF phases. Now, the point is B, D and F are talking about off-balance sheet. So if I transfer something to off-balance sheet, I need to derecognize it from my books. Similarly, if I transfer something from off-balance sheet to on-balance sheet quasi-equity, I actually recognize it on my balance sheet. So we are saying that it is actually possible, you can just create cross-references to say that this is as per the recognition and derecognition criteria. And those recognition and derecognition criteria may already be covered in the normal accounting policies of the institution. Disclosure in respect of accounting policy shall also include the following significant aspects. The basis and reasons that govern the transfer of assets between various investment pools. Now, this is very important that about the, about the basis and reasons. So how we apply and in what situations we actually create the transfers. Uh because as a general principle, transfer shall be minimal or there should be no transfer. Tangibility ratio and other restrictions applicable to transfer of asset between various investment pools in line with Sharia principles and rules. Sister Farida, as I mentioned, that the same tangibility issue will apply on each investment pool with regard to in and outs of the investment account holders as well. Okay? Any restrictions in line with the Sharia principles and rules on short-term transfers of assets with expected return to original investment pool to avoid a buyback transaction. Now, this is a issue that people ignore. The, I created a treasury pool for seven days. Okay, because I just created, I, I took a deposit of seven, for seven days. Uh a, a, a Uria-type treasury deposit, I took it for seven days. Now, what happens? I transferred one asset from this, from A pool to this T pool. And it is understood that after seven days or after thirty days or after sixty days, it will be returning back to A pool. Don't you think it is a buyback? If you say, oh, we are just tagging the assets, no, it's not a buyback. But if you consider that actually it constitutes a sale of an asset to another party and then coming back from that party to the first party, it becomes a buyback. In my humble view, it becomes. Again, we know that I'm talking about the plain reading of Sharia standards, it becomes a buyback. Yes, there can be issues with regard to, more Sharia issues with regard to this thing. But if it is clearly understood that this asset is going only for sixty days and will come back after sixty days, it is a buyback transaction. So, so in that situation, to avoid a real buyback, you must have real fair values applied on both ends of the transactions. And that will be allowed by some of the scholars. Some scholars will not even allow this buyback at fair value. So the situation is that actually at times we just ignore the concept that each investment pool is owned by a different set of stakeholders. So any transactions that happen between the investment pools are subject to Sharia principles and rules which are defined in different Sharia standards. So a buyback, if I say to you, that you will say, oh, buyback is not allowed in Sharia. But you do a buyback on day in, day out in case of investment pools. So either you transfer from A to T and from T you transfer to D not to A. Or if your Sharia board allows, you do it purely on fair value. So the first transfer takes place at fair value and return back takes place at fair value. Otherwise, you are doing something which, again, in my humble view, may be termed haram. Any restrictions in line with Sharia or, sorry, this one is done. Any restrictions and or any specific valuation approaches applied on transfers of any non-monetary assets in line with Sharia principles and rules? Treatment, treatment of changes and classification of investment in sukuk shares and other. Now, this is again a very important issue. I have a held-to-maturity investment. I transferred it from A pool to B pool. Then I brought it back from B pool to A pool, but it is still held to maturity. This, again, I held to maturity is an accounting classification. But obviously, we need to be considering different factors on that. So if, if you make, keep it held to maturity but transfer at fair value or don't transfer at fair value, then there might be some of the rights which are jeopardized. So there are challenges with regard to the changes in classification of investment. And I can tell you, in the banking business, this is a smaller issue, but I have seen this thing practically. Then in Takafu, if it is transferred from, from PTF to PIEF or to, or from owner's equity to shareholders fund to the PTF or PIEF, these things have a bigger issue. Similarly, this thing has a bigger issue if it goes to on-balance sheet to off-balance sheet. So there are so many challenges attached to that. So if you make these transfers, what impact does it have on the classification of these instruments from the accounting, accounting perspective? Because it might be a change in business model. So for me, any held-to-maturity instrument should not be like, you know, transferred between the pools. And only available for sale or held for held-to-maturity instrument should be transferred. But if you are transferring the held-to-maturity instruments, what would be the appropriate accounting for that? That's a challenge. The basis applied by the institution in valuing the assets should be transferred and the rationale in line with relevant AOF phases and applicable Sharia principles and rules and the respective business model in case such valuation is different from their value. So we are not insisting that it is fair value because we are doing an accounting standard, we are not doing a governance standard. If we are doing a governance standard, we may impose a fair value. Again, I think, don't think that in the fair, in the, in the governance standard, we will be imposing it. We will be putting it only more to the approval of Sharia board. But brother Mansoor Al Khudai mentioned that it must happen to fair value. My personal view is that it should happen as per fair value, but we might leave it to the decision of the Sharia board. But here, it is the accounting, accounting standard. Accounting standard can, can drive you on the accounting on fair value, but it cannot insist you on transaction based on fair value because accounting does not drive the business transactions. Business transactions are to be reported by accounting. So in this standard, we are not insisting on fair value, but we are saying that if it is happening at a value other than fair value, you need to disclose the rationale in line with relevant AOF phases and applicable Sharia principles, why and the business model, why it is different from fair value. Uh and Sharia principles and rules means approval of the Sharia board also has to be there. The commitments and restrictions applied by the mutual contractual relationship between investors of various investment pools. An institution shall disclose in reasonable detail the cumulative quantitative information. So first was about the qualitative information, but this one is more about the quantitative, that is numbers uh of the, for the period in respect of following. The cumulative amount of transfer between or aware material between significant categories of owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance sheet assets under management at net transfer value and respective gains and losses recognized in respective categories where applicable as well as difference between the net transfer value and fair value of such assets if the net transfer value is different from the fair value. So you need to present a quantitative disclosure in form of table uh as to how this disclosure, how, how these transfers have taken place and what have been the impact. The valuation differences resulting from the transfer of assets in foreign currencies and the financial effect of these transfers. Uh the nature in terms of significant assets transferred where these assets are divisible, separable and related. Sharia principles and rules apply as well as the disclosure of significant assets proportionately divided between or where material between significant categories of owner's equity, quasi-equity and off-balance sheet assets. Transfer of asset transaction conducted with related parties. For example, uh like you know, you transfer to mutual funds which are managed by you etc. Indicating the nature of relationship, type of transaction, the total value of these transactions at beginning and the end of the financial period and the financial effect were recognized or unrecognized in line with the respective accounting policies and relevant Sharia principles and rules. So I created a special pool for my related party and I put high-yielding assets in that at the cost of my Uria. So I'm just giving one example, but related party transactions may have a conflict of interest issue here in form of different investment pools. So this is again one of the things that need to be addressed properly. The standard is proposed to be effective on January, for January twenty-twenty-five. Uh obviously, earlier adoption will be encouraged. I think this one and the other control and quasi-equity and, and off-balance sheet asset standard will become effective on the same date. So with that, I think I'll, I'll take the remaining questions. We are already a little bit, uh uh we have crossed the time limit. So we are already at twelve thirty-two. Uh so I think we should try to, try to conclude as soon as possible by taking the comments. It is good to see that most of the participants are still there, highly encouraging. Brother Abdurrahman Al Sheikh, I think it's either brother Abdurrahman or it is brother, brother Mansoor Al Khudai. Would it be, would be great if there were minutes of today's hearing so that we can review and learn from everyone. Uh brother, uh brother Abdurrahman and brother Mansoor, I think we have, uh as I mentioned initially, we will be putting the whole of the, uh whole of the public hearing. We cannot have minutes, but we will be putting all the public hearings that we are holding on our YouTube channel. So Insha Allah, it will be available. Sister Farida and brother Iswan, if you can kindly provide in the chat window the link to Aofia YouTube channel where our public hearings can be accessed, including the new, this, this one and the earlier ones. Uh we have comments from Danyar Mamirov. What if Islamic window has transferred pool of funds from traditional banking subsidy just with letter from the head of Islamic window? They consider this money to be used for Islamic window financing operation. Bank consider it is normal to use just letter without giving a limited structure of Karthasan contract. Can such funds be non-halal or halal? Can we transfer such funds periodically from time to time from traditional banking business upon need? Uh so, actually, actually, whether such, such transfer of fund will be a form of card or form of capital will be more dependent on, on the contents that are written in that letter. For me, for me personally, if the intention is clear that it is like a non-interest-bearing loan. Uh if the intention is clear and the letter clarifies that and the fund is transferred from party A to party B and party B accepts that knowing, uh having in knowledge the contents of the letter. Then for me, uh having a written contract might be a regulatory and legal requirement, but not an accounting or Sharia requirement here. So it is better to have a formal written contract with terms and conditions. But if it isn't understood that is an interest-free loan, then I think that can be accepted and it is understood. Thank you very much. Uh next comment is from Nourdine Rahimya. Uh what, what are the basis and reasons for transfer of assets? For example, when we say that basis and reasons is, is the justification uh that what are the situations in which they are transferred? Like for example, the examples that I mentioned initially with regard to having a liquidity requirement in, for the bank. Uh otherwise, you will have to encash the assets or sell the asset or you will not be able to pay back to the investors. So this is one example of the basis and reasons. There can be different situations like that. Uh and secondly, obviously, we, we need to have the accounting policy in that part whether. And secondly, obviously, we, we need to have the accounting policy in that part, whether it will be done on fair value basis or another basis that is approved by the Sharia board. Thank you very much. So I think I can't see any further comment, question, comment in the question and answer box. I think there are, there is a, there is a, there are, there is one comment that I can see in the chat window. All the time we request that kindly put the questions in the Q and A box, not in the chat window. But I can just see, okay, this is a general comment. I think we have a tradition of sukuk issuance, brother Umar Sharif has mentioned that we have a tradition of sukuk issuance by issuers forming an SPV. Currently, we have a law that requires companies binding bidding for PPP projects, forming SPV as well locally so that we can execute the, so that we can execute the PPP project. How will the draft standard capture this phenomena? Actually, it will depend on the nature of sukuk. Some of the sukuk will be, again, you are investor as a bank. I think you are an investor as a bank in this situation. You are not the, I think you are investor as a bank, not as, not the, because this standard is applicable on the bank and similar financial institutions. So, so if you are issuing sukuk yourself, then it applies. It may be a quasi-equity sukuk or equity sukuk or a liability sukuk depending on the nature. We have issued exposure draft for FAS twenty-nine on, on sukuk. That will apply if you are the issuer, but if you are the investor, then this standard does not apply. With that, I think we are done and we don't have any further questions. And I know we have already taken enough time from you and a few minutes above that. So with that, I would like to hand it over back to our colleagues to conclude the session. Thank you very much for being here. Salaam alaikum warahmatullah wabarakatuh.
Waalaikumsalam rahmatullah rabbah ar-Rahmah. Thank you very much for the insightful presentation and your Q and A session that was held with the major stakeholders from the industry. Thank you very much. And we would like also to thank all our partners from Bangladesh. We would like to thank all the participants. And also we'd like to thank all our team colleagues here in Yufi. Thank you very much and Insha Allah, we see you again in the future, in the very soon, very, very near future for more public hearings on the same standard Insha Allah and on other standards in, both in English and Arabic. This was the first round of public hearings for this particular standard. Insha Allah, we will have more in the foreseeable future. We will keep you posted. Thank you very much and see you Insha Allah next time around. Salaam alaikum rahmatullah wabarakatuh.